That would have been January twenty eighth.
Good.
All right, welcome everybody to tonight's City of Tumwater Planning Commission meeting for January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five, seven o'clock, and we're ready to go. Go, our meeting is called to order. I'll start with roll call. Mr. Ecker? Mr. Kirkpatrick? Commissioner Kotek?
Here.
Commissioner Staff?
Here.
Me, Commissioner Robbins. Happy New Year, everybody, that we're all here. Are there any changes to our agenda tonight from anyone?
From staff.
Let's move on to approval of minutes from our December tenth meeting. Any revisions? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
The motion on the second page. Commissioner Tobias made the motion.
Was Commissioner Tobias? Oh, oh, okay, yeah.
Oh, Commissioner Staff, Brandon Staff?
It might have been Commissioner Staff.
No, no.
With Brandon Staff, not Com- Staff.
Well, I think it's called council member, and it should be.
Is council member Staff?
Oh, you're correct.
And it should be.
Sorry, Commissioner. But I kind of like the council member Staff.
We just promoted you, Commissioner Staff.
Yeah, so let's check the audio. Okay, thank you for being able to hear us.
All right, would you, would you check that in?
Barely, a little thing.
Don't recollect, so.
I, yeah, I changed it to Commissioner. So, I'll, I'll let.
But Commissioner Kirkpatrick is, is saying that he thinks it would be Commissioner Tobias who actually made the motion?
The, Mr. Tobias made the one to close the public hearing.
Right.
Okay.
And then he also made the one before.
Okay.
There was no council member Staff here to make.
Got it. Are you saying you looked at the first page? No, council member Staff was present.
Commissioner? Are you looking at the, are you looking at the motion right after public testimony on the minutes, or the one?
I'm hoping it's the motion, I have the public testimony.
Right, and so.
The council member Staff made the motion.
Yeah, it should be Commissioner Staff. Commissioner Staff.
No, his last name is Staff. Um, our.
It's the last name that causes much confusion, so do not worry.
But you don't think it was Commissioner Tobias?
I just tried to fix.
Okay.
Who couldn't.
All right.
Yeah, no, Michael is still tracking our minutes, so I wouldn't try to do that.
Okay. With that adjustment, the, just changing council member to that first, to that first motion, they're to Commissioner Staff. Can we get a motion about our minutes, or any other discussion?
I am moved that we approve the minutes as amended.
All seconded.
Great, thanks. It's been moved and seconded to approve our minutes from our December tenth, two thousand and twenty four meeting as amended. Any further discuss? All right, all in favor of the ten twenty four as amended, please say aye.
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 Well, that seems like nobody opposed, so, all right, minutes approved, thank you, everybody. Um, let's move on to Commissioner reports. Anybody? I'll, I'll just myself bring up that Brad has just mentioned that it looks like we don't have much for an agenda for our January twenty eighth meeting, and so what's the, what's the commission's pleasure? Cancel, hold it anyway, make him bring cake? Other ideas? Motion. I think we need a motion. All right, that was a, a motion to cancel our January twenty, twentieth meeting, is there a second?
All seconded.
Um, it moved and seconded to cancel January twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five meeting. Uh, any other discussion? Um, all in favor of canceling January twenty eighth meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Sounds like we're canceled. Next meeting will be whatever it is in, in February. Let's go to Deputy Director's report. You get the hang of that.
Yeah.
Good job.
I, I hope that person shows up at some point. I've got a few things to share. Number one, I think I sent out an email with the updated Attorney General's Advisory to everybody. Karen also included this cover memo, just as a reminder, as we're discussing any regulatory or plan changes, to be keeping these things that she's raising, especially the, any, talking about unconditional taking, unconstitutional takings, et cetera, in mind. We do have a, a process that we file for legal review of every document that goes to you, in terms of the final format of the ordinances, and also for the plans. So, our intent is to try to catch any particular issues before they reach you, but at the same time, I think it's a good idea to, for you to be aware, and if you see things in there that don't look right, you need to raise those questions with us, so we can address that. Uh, this is the first update since two thousand and eighteen, I think.
Something out of the Attorney General's office?
Yep, so I presume what they've done is, I haven't read through the entire document again, but I'm certain they've updated all the court cases. And there have been some changes on the federal level, as to how takings is handled in particular cases, I think it's reflected in here.
Is it fair to say that the upshot of this is that we're largely in compliance with this?
Yes.
Directive, and there's not much to expect that we change?
Not necessarily. I think what will happen, um, there won't be necessarily a huge change in how we things. There may be some interpretations that we, that would have been applicable under the previous federal rulings with the new court and some of the recent case laws I know that have come down the past couple of years. They have changed the tests of what constitutes a taking, and how to determine that. So, we'll sort of start to see whether that, once we apply that kind of ordinances, do we have issues or not. I don't anticipate that. That's something we just have to be mindful of.
Nothing like where we need to, on the place changing ordinance?
No, no, that has not been identified as something. Um, I've also included here the updated meeting schedule, so your next meeting will be February eleventh. Be having a further discussion of the climate, pardon me. And Dana will bring forth the food system plan with our consultant Rebecca. One thing that has already changed on the schedule, Clint is no longer with the city as the transportation manager. We're actively looking for a new person, so that's being advertised. So, hopefully we'll have somebody onboard this spring on the transportation side. We also have lost Bernie, who was our transportation engineer. So, currently our, our transportation engineer and director is serving both of those roles, so please add to his workload as much as you wish. We are moving forward, however, with the update of the transportation plan. Dan is actually doing the coordination with Farian Pierce. So, you'll be seeing, for example, the, uh, the joint tour with the council at the end of February is going forward. Dan has put together an itinerary that we're working through, and also the open house is still on, to go for March. And in the meantime, Farian Pierce is working on the update to the, the draft itself, so we hopefully by April, May, we'll have that as well. So, all of that will continue. So, I just wanted to let you see the schedule. Obviously, we've got things already on there through July eight. I think the important thing I want to raise is the fact that our approval for the comp plan update, we're shooting to try to get the actual comp plan approved by the end of the year. Well, excuse me, you'll have a public hearing on the comprehensive plan at your last meeting in December. That's the one ordinance that adopts all of the elements and the plans. That will go to council in January, and then the development code updates will follow, I don't know, three month behind schedule. So, once we finish with the comprehensive plan update, then you'll skip the ordinance for the development code. However, during the spring, you'll see all these things kind of start to come forward for review. We just have some particular deadlines, or we have to allow for a certain time for, say, Washita to review the transportation plan, for Commerce to review some of the things before it becomes a formal ordinance and a formal combined plan. So, and we've also figured that, once we actually backtracked and tried to figure out how to cram it all into one year, that it wasn't going to happen, so.
Assuming that the other jurisdictions in Thurston County are all kind of moving along more or less the same pace, and together with the countywide policies and.
Yeah, yeah, relatively the same pace. The Lacey and, and, and we are probably on the same timeline. We probably might be a little bit ahead of Lacey. I think Olympia is still trying to finish by the end of this year. They're going to lose their planning manager to retirement this spring, so that'll, we'll see how that actually all pulls together. I, and it sounds like the county's online, except for, I'll bring you another update related to the county joint plan and Title twenty-two updates. Pardon me. The staff that had been leading that on the county side has left the county. So, we'll have to wait until the county has a new person that replaces Leah, help us get through the, the Title twenty-two updates, and also whatever joint plan tweaks that we need to make. I'm not anticipating any dramatic changes to the joint plan. It's going to be adopting mostly what we're doing, with some minor changes on land use. But they're going to need to have staff do that. We also have not seen drafts of any of the materials that the county has been working on, and we need to see it on the staff level. Also related to county issues is that the County Board of Commissioners is going to have a hearing on the twenty-first of this month to talk about amendments to the countywide planning policies. There are two amendments that are being made. One is to deal with the state mandates for tribal communications, so that language has been introduced. And as part of that, the second is language that the Urban Growth Management Committee of TRPC had forwarded to the commissioners for approval regarding urban growth area land swaps. That was done in August. In the fall, the planning managers and directors met and sort of fleshed out the details of all of, all truly what all, everything that needs to happen in terms of coordination between jurisdiction and the county, about how to handle, who does what, at what time, and so forth for urban growth swap. We are currently drafting an urban, an interlocal agreement with the county. That's, we're waiting for final approval of the countywide planning policies. Also, their environmental review is not set to finish until the end of January. There's a potential for appeal based on the interest in this particular issue, so we'll have to see how that plays out. But we expect that they'll probably, once we have the interlocal agreement, language agreed to, and on the schedule for approval by the council and the commission, that we'll be looking at dates for joint meetings with the county planning commission to talk about the UGA swap. Probably the initial meeting will be what the process will look like, and what things we're going to do. It will be interesting to try to finish this in one year, given the level of community interest on, on both sides, as well as all the, this is our, the first time somebody's had to go through this. We'll have to see how it works once we get on the ground, kind of thing. So, just be aware that that's not reflected on the schedule yet. That will take some time. And then I've also included in your packet the updated comprehensive plan schedule with your meeting dates scheduled out, as well as the council and any other dates that we know of right.
I really appreciate these.
And the timeline itself is always kept updated on the webpage as well, so if you're looking for the current version.
Any other discussion? Do we have anybody, there's nobody in the room for public comment. Do we have anybody online who?
We have Chris Lester and Wayne Olson. Put Chris up first.
No comment.
Thanks for being here.
No comment.
Ms. Ralton? All righty.
Also, thanks for being here.
Um, and, but we did have the one email from Mr. Kurt's coming in on the, on the climate element, which is great. And then maybe we can move right on to item number eight, the two thousand and twenty-five comp plan periodic update climate element, and. And Alyssa, if you were relevant to, to, on to any of the remarks made, or.
I've taken a look at Sad's comments, and there are many that we conspired to do, many that seem absolutely of course. And others that would need further discussion. I don't know when the planning commission or other staff wants to discuss, but question number two. And four, I think, the need for discussion. Likely some feedback from our building inspector and housing team. But all makes sense.
Um, so, hello, I'm Alyssa Joneswood, I'm sustainability manager for the city, and I will be the first of many, well, actually, second with the planning commission, second of many, presentations and discussions about our new climate elements, which is currently in draft form. And tonight, I'm hoping that we can focus on the greenhouse gas emissions sub-element, so the action CL four, or CL eight. There are two hundred and one actions, so fitting them all in in one presentation would be, I think, too long for any human to sit through. So, we're breaking it up into chunks. Tonight, we'll be focusing on that greenhouse gas emissions sub-element. I didn't tell you that beforehand, so thank you for reading the entire document and getting familiar with it. Just want to reiterate the state requirements, the red ones are the ones that apply to the discussion tonight, so that we must have a greenhouse gas climate mitigation sub-element to address reductions in greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled, and in consideration of environmental justice, to avoid worsening environmental health disparities must be present throughout. Next time, we'll talk about the resilience sub-element, so those are the two requirements to keep in mind for tonight. We've been doing quite a bit of community outreach. Thank you, Dana, for this picture. Dana and I tabled last week at the Tumwater branch of the library. We cut the, um, the, the comprehensive plan climate element into pieces, where each action was a little, little piece of paper, so that people were aware of the two hundred and one actions, but rather could pick one strip of paper and discuss it with us. So, that's all these random things on the, on the table here. Um, we have continued participation from the climate policy advisory team, as members of affected communities and key stakeholders that have been meeting whenever we need them, which has been quite often, to give review and specific advice and suggestions for the climate element all the way from conception to where we are now, and we will continue to meet with them. We had our in-person open house in Osho on August fourteenth, and then we had our online open house. We have gotten feedback from the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative Community Advisory Work Group. We've now met with the Thurston Climate Action Team's community organizer twice, and we're working on a community assembly with the other jurisdictions to talk about our climate elements altogether, with community organizations that we've been having a hard time reaching, that others have connections. Great. We've been doing direct emails to community-based organizations, nonprofits, interested community members, affinity groups. Been tabling at the Thurston County Food Bank to encourage the participation at the online open house, and then we'll go again later this month to encourage participation in review of the climate elements and participation survey about that, whether or not that's one action, all the actions, whatever people have the capacity to engage with, we are happy for that. We have presented to the South Sound Asians and Pacific Islanders Coalition once, and we'll be doing again soon, I think, next week. The draft climate element is now currently open for public comment specifically. We're welcoming comments throughout. Anytime we have a new version, we'll be welcoming comments, but now is a kind of holding period for us to stop working on that for a little bit, collect feedback, so that we can then go make revisions and continue to do it, work on it in an iterative process. Mentioned the food bank and the library, and we'll, we have made some social media posts, and we will continue to engage folks on social media as well. So, tonight, we are focused on the greenhouse gas emissions reduction, that sub-element. There are things that overlap with resilience that you may think should be in the greenhouse gas, but are actually in the plants, or vice versa. And then environmental justice, and just making our community a livable, wonderful place, and keeping it that way. Those are kind of in the middle of the Venn diagram, that could be either, so if you see something missing, it could be represented in another section or not. But tonight, greenhouse gas. And so, I can switch between showing the actual draft elements, but these are the questions that I'm going to ask for each goal, goal by goal, to see if you have any feedback. So, those questions here for discussion, do you have any general or specific comments that you'd like to share about this goal? Again, we'll do this goal by goal for four through eight. Are there any shifts in action timelines that you'd like to suggest for this goal? Do you foresee any unintended consequences or burdens associated with policies or actions under this goal? Do you anticipate anyone in the Tumwater community being left out or left behind by any policy or action under this goal, and if so, how do we fix that? Using the icons to see which actions are publicly identified priorities, there's a special little icon in there. Which, do you think would or could impact you, or the things that you care about most? What do you expect that impact to be? And do you have any additional thoughts that you'd like to share related to this goal and its associated policies and actions? I know that's a lot of questions for a lot of different policies and goals, but that's the framing that I wanted to try and keep in mind as we discuss this sub-element. So, if you, I see that two of you have your printed out copy. Do you have a copy? Okay, perfect, so I don't need to push screen. So, please, goal C, uh, CL four. Any responses to these questions that you have regarding CL four?
Not specifically CL four, but just kind of overall, using the icons, it would have been useful to understand what they were upfront, a key. I think there's just two, like you said. There's just the, the environmental justice, which looks a little bit like a scale. And then the other one was, I'm not too sure what, or is there?
The two actions, the two icons that are in this version, we plan on adding more. There's a small key, how to read this element, I'll see if it's seven.
Yeah, I missed that, all right.
But this is it.
But it's good feedback that you missed.
Yeah, I, I did the same thing, too, and I had to go back, and I eventually found it, but I did the same thing, I'm jumping ahead and was like, oh.
I wonder if putting it right in front of my keys. Just placement like we. But, you know, down in the footer or something, okay, whatever, whatever it takes, that, that we put people like me in.
We do, we have plans, visions for additional icons that we'll put into the next version. We are going to be required on a five-year basis to report implementation progress to the state, to Department of Commerce. So, two actions, or two icons that we plan on adding to the next version are related to basically how we will measure those. If action is highly measurable qualitatively or quantitatively, those will have two different icons, so that when we're doing that reporting back, that it's clear that not everything's going to be numbers. Some things are going to be stories, or pictures, or other ways of showing progress. And then another icon that we plan on adding, but didn't have time to for this one, is a state required prior, uh, state requirement. So, if there's a particular action that has to be in there, we're going to have an icon to show, like, this is non-negotiable, we have to put this in here.
Anyone online? Go ahead, Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Digging down into this now?
Yes, CL four.
I don't mean that, so, four point two point one. I mean, do we even know what else is sold? And how, how, how are we going to, how are we going to do this? You don't have to put the vision from the city to sell your house worth a dollar.
This will actually be coming to the general government committee at this ordinance related to this action. This action's been in progress. We are not notified of the sale, however, there are other jurisdictions in the Pacific Northwest and throughout the United States that do have this kind of policy to require a home energy score to be disclosed at the time of listing real estate. And the way that we figured out how to do that is that if we pass an ordinance that requires this be a thing, which will be up for careful consideration, of course, at their discretion, this triggers a requirement for the Northwest Multiple Listing Service to then have a new required field to put in that information. This is done for other jurisdictions that have noise disclosure ordinances, like in Highland County, because of all the aircraft traffic, that's part of the sale process for people to know the decimal levels that they can expect for their home. So, while we do not know when the homes are sold or listed for sale, we do have a mechanism in place, a low tax time mechanism, to ensure compliance for policies such as, at least for ninety-five percent of the sales, not a hundred percent. That would take some more boots on the ground, but, uh, perfect, being the enemy of the.
Sounds like a horrendous, when I bought my house, I closed on the telephone, forger. There's certainly no interaction with the city involved in buying the house.
And this one still won't necessarily be in interaction with the city. The city sets a requirement, and the Northwest Multiple Listing Service adds it to the forms that are part of the, the listing process. The city requires it, but it's not otherwise involved.
Um, on, to that one, um, from what you've described, if, if that places a, an expectation or burden on the listing service, is that something the city then buys that service from them, and therefore it will be a cost to the city? Or who bears the cost of somebody doing that?
So, this is a policy that's going to go to the general government committee in February, so I can provide you a copy of the, the draft ordinance that's in place. This action in particular, this is also referred to as the Home Energy Score Model Ordinance. This is something that council identified as a regional priority for the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative to work specifically on developing back in two thousand and twenty-three. We've been working on it with the past year, including lots of stakeholder engagement, including the legal staff and MLS. There was actually their suggestion to do the required field, and the timeline that we have with it, between the passage and the effective date, is also suggested by Northwest MLS. The cost to do a home energy score goes between one hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars. We have money set aside in the city budget starting next year for a subsidy for low-income customers, to make sure that it's not financially harsh to do so. We're also working on economic and workforce development, to get the workforce to do this trained up. There's been a lot of thought and, and community engagement, specifically stakeholder engagement, a series of focus groups and interviews that happened over the summer for the development of this. So, the city will have the cost for, we have a contract with the national service provider to provide the required quality assurance quality control for the U.S. Department of Energy, which created the Home Energy Score Program, which is the grading system that we decided upon, and gotten stakeholder support for. So, there will be some costs associated with that, and that is split between the four jurisdictions as part of our existing interlocal agreements. That'll be for the service that people will put the score through, which will then auto populate in the Northwest MLS, so that no one has any opportunity to fit or miss the spot. It'll be helpful for renters with. It'll be helpful for renters with the national service provider because then if someone is renting a house that was recently listed for sale, then they can also expect their energy bill by going online and looking at that house and seeing what, how efficient it is and what the expected energy bills are. A lot of benefits. There are costs associated with it for stepping up the program, but then the overall costs long-term are very low. Then also will be split between.
What if that house is not listed?
If it's not listed, it goes through a private sale without, then that's a loophole that we can't figure out a way to get around.
Has there been any research done about what impact we actually think something like this is going to have? I mean, because I know as a home buyer, like, it would kind of be interesting to know that score, but it's not necessarily going to be like a deal breaker probably between like buying a house or renting a house or not. Like, I'd be more interested to know about information, like, does it already have solar panels or things like that? So has there been any research done to kind of say that, yeah, this is really going to be information that people want that's going to make it worth the cost of setting up and paying for it?
Yes. So the individual perspective home buyer, it goes into their decision-making process. So in one way, for instance, on our Community By Drew Work Group for the Thurston Climate Litigation Collaborative, we have one member who wanted to be on the collaborative because she bought a house and didn't realize how expensive her energy bill was going to be because her house is so drafty. So making sure that you're not making poor financial decisions and not considering the full cost of homeownership, which includes the utility bill, that's helpful in a qualitative way to know and be able to have that information to make a, a better decision for yourself and your budget. City of Portland has had this program for a number of years and they've found, I think it was a 10-fold increase in homes that had the home energy score that did home efficiency improvements. So it helps us get to our greenhouse gas reductions in existing homes, which is a really kind of hard place to get because people don't always have the opportunity. But having the information about the efficiency of their home and having that be part of listing your home and if your home is inefficient, maybe you want to make an improvement to efficiency, which could be insulation or weather stripping, small or large things, but there is, it's not 100% correlation, but they have noticed a huge increase in the number of homes with a score that go for energy efficiency upgrades or at least apply to them through the energy, whatever the, the Oregon State Energy Organization. It has benefits.
So as I understand, it's either by ordinance or by requiring them to get a city for it.
It's two things. It won't be the city, right? It's just the ordinance and the.
I'm looking at 4.2.4.
That one is the one that's with substantial. Yeah, for a substantial remodel that we wouldn't start working on until 2029. And it could be that there's a take for that, that's an intention. All of these are intentions that we would hope to do. But it would be for a substantial remodel action. And again, we can also strike actions if they're very unfavorable.
Anything that's in the permit process? Buy a permit, we've got a hammer. You're saying you're working with the other cities so that all the cities would do this in units? Couldn't be out there hanging on our own.
Yeah, we're all working on that 4.2.1 together. Pay attention to have everything streamlined, all of the rules the same. Home energy score offender could get a business license in one city similar to how Uber's and Lyft operate and the other jurisdictions would honor that that's verified and part of this, they're able to work in it. Jurisdictions, there's a lot of coordination going on. For the 4.2.1, the 4.2.4 is a future extension of, of that work. And if that would be regionally coordinated, that would be interesting to see in 2029 if there's a take for that. If not, it's a suggested action, our complex.
I think it's also worth noting that that one didn't necessarily have our community. Since it doesn't have our community that logo on it, then it's more or less a required action, is it not?
This is not a required action, but so we need to reduce. Buildings and energy is our largest emitting sector in Thurston County for greenhouse gas emissions and existing buildings is the largest section of that. It's very hard to get existing buildings to, to improve. I'm a first-time homeowner right now and the thought of redoing systems or it's not a fun thought. I just had to redo my entire kitchen because of a mold problem level. And then I think about having to require a higher efficiency score something with you. Not something that we're asking for now, but other ways that we, level that we might have to be able to pull in order to actually see the emissions reduction. And the emissions reduction is the state requirement and this is the most emitting sector. So not explicitly required, but this is a high-impact way of getting to what is required.
And more of a carrot way rather than a stick way?
Some of them are carrots, some of them are sticks.
So we haven't quite got to this yet, but the kind of corresponding to the residential buildings is the 4.3.1. Would that work in a similar manner?
Yes, this one's definitely trickier because while 95% of sales go through MLS, there's not one platform that all applicants apply for renting. So there's a lot of figuring out that needs to be done for this action. There are jurisdictions in the United States who do have these kinds of programs and they have, you know, be very helpful for people to, again, make better decisions about their full cost of, of living. This one's tricky. It might take me until 2027 to even figure out how to start.
So within, you, you just mentioned that the buildings and energy sector of contributors to emissions is the largest one. Are residential of all sizes compared to non-residential, what does that look like?
I can give you the greenhouse gas inventory as a follow-up so that you can look at the particular percentages. I don't have them memorized.
I'm just looking at, is the residential bigger than the non-residential?
Residential is quite large. In past years, industrial energy has gone up significantly, mostly from natural gas. Thurston County went up like three percent. Finish point. So there's some strange anomalies in the data, but we have been tracking it on an annual basis and residential existing buildings is the largest chunk. Of course, if buildings are mostly electric, with the Clean Energy Transformation Act for Washington State, a lot of those emissions get wiped out by clean energy being supplied. So that, that would be helpful for addressing the residential and buildings and energy-related emissions. Decarbonizing the buildings is another thing that needs to happen to wipe, really reduce those emissions as well. But there's also recent state initiative 2066 kind of complicates the way in which we, we may approach that. So be shy away from this, the climate element.
Question on 4.3.3. A footnote on the cool loop. How about a living wall?
Yes, green roofs is another opportunity for that. What is a living wall? Oh, no, sorry. Basically, a wall that has a pant line that helps cool the, the general ambient here. Outside. So I can have a. Anything else on CL4?
That's what I'm thinking about. A wildfire issue around here. I wonder if, if walls were out, we're talking about putting vegetation on the wall. Sounds like one system isn't going to agree with the others.
Yes, this would probably play into the desensible space. And those normally living walls to be effective were the intention here of reducing heat. They're normally kept green, however, that's not explicitly listed, nor is it defined in the footnote what living wall is. So perhaps we'll happily take your suggestion to maybe remove the living wall aspect. Thank you for catching up. And the 201 actions, there's some details that I have overlooked. I'll put these questions up again in case any of these lower ones are things that you'd like to mull over.
Let me just check in if either Commissioner Kotek or Commissioner Staff have any questions. I didn't see a hand up, but just want to check in.
I just want to, I can't hear very well, so I just want to make sure, Alyssa, that I heard you correct. So this would show on an MLS listing, so a potential home buyer could see kind of what the cost for energy in the home has been historically? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I want to clarify. So it's the estimated annual energy bill, which is broken down by fuel types. So the natural gas, the electricity, and if there's solar production, how that goes into it. Also, there is a equivalent of kind of like a mile per gallon for efficiency that's rated on one to 10. That's also part of that report that would be disclosed. And cost-effective energy efficiency improvements that would have a payback of 10 years or less. That could happen to improve the score and that potential improvement of the score and reduction of associated energy costs is also on the report that would be part of the disclosure.
Thank, thank you.
One other thing kind of on that, is there any way, permit me right now, for anyone to get that information? Because it seems like we'd be creating, kind of handing it to them. Is there any way that someone could go and find that now if they were serious?
No, you could and some home buyers do request utility data from Puget Sound Energy. Some have luck getting that, some do not. But also that goes into the occupant behavior aspect of the energy bill, where the home energy score looks at the assets of the home. The, not necessarily if there's six teenage kids that are playing video games that want a freezing cold room. It's more so this is what you can expect the house to operate under for, in these modeled conditions that are modeled by the U.S. Department of Energy residential condition. So there's a difference between occupant behavior, energy associated, and, and the actual assets of the house, which is the roof, the windows, the insulation, the HVAC, so on and so forth. But no, there is no way to get this down.
Right, go ahead. You'd like to move on to CL4? So just putting those questions up in case it's anything that you all want to mull over or if we just want to continue on the specific feedback. CL5. Same question. Any specific or general suggestions, any action timelines, thoughts on unintended consequences, who might be left out? Impacts and additional thoughts? Commissioner Kretsch.
5.1.3. I don't think you'll ever finish that. You're going to be seeking funding forever. I have a few others that you haven't put a completion date on, so I would think that that would be included.
Five point, which number?
5.1.3.
Oh, yes. No completion date.
We're going to be looking for funding sources. Many of them have a reasonable completion date, others just recognize the fact that it's going to go on. And I think this probably is one that will go on.
Thank you. Five is a small section. Just checking in with those online. Mr. Staff or Kotek, any points on CL5? Actions?
None for me either.
Great, thank you. Let's go to CL6. Same question, same question. I'm curious here on this one. I know we're focusing on individual people and how people collectively move around, but I'm also wondering about movement of goods in business and industry impacts. Do we, am I, is that in another area? Or how do we, how do we accommodate the, the travel from those sources?
We have the transportation element as well. You're, you're referring to specifically how it impacts climate, how we move goods.
I'm, I'm looking to see how the climate element will talk about not just people movement, but deliveries, commercial transport, freight transport of various goods, different things like that, which are, if they're operating some sort of greenhouse gas emitting vehicle, one way or another, how, how are they brought into the fold here? Question. There's some cool stuff being done in Portland, but they're a lot more dense than we are. But I'm sure there's some other examples that we could look at. Seems like we would want to talk about that, I mean, right? You know, thriving community with a lot of that economic activity that means movement of those things too. Thank you.
And that kind of makes me think about, you know, all the people who may live in like New Shelton or someplace out there who work for the state or anything like that who commute, because I know I work for the state, right? And so just kind of think about like how those people might fit in, right? Because lots of freebies and things, obviously, for people who live here. But there are a lot of people who come into the city to work or commute or whatever and, and continue to do that. And so, yeah, if, if there's some way that they could kind of fit into those two or it might be kind of interesting to think about.
These are the answers to who is left behind by these policies. Thank you. Going to online, Commissioner Kotek or Staff, do you have anything on this one?
I don't.
6.6.
6, yeah, CL6.
Looking at 6.2.
Okay.
This is a halfway step here. Why not go all the way and require all new homes to have EV chargers?
That might be a Washington State Energy Code thing? Oh, all right, go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner Staff.
I, I like where Commissioner Terry's going with this. I think having an outlet at least, because I know for my house, I have installed an outlet for a future charger to be plugged into. And just having an outlet that is capable, a 50-amp outlet, I think would be maybe more feasible than a full-on charger. But I do like where that is going.
Can I share the story of where this action came from? One of our CPAT members, our climate policy advisory team, she is a single mother who happens to be an electrician. She rents a home in Olympia that is older and the wiring is older. It's not grounded. She recently purchased an electric vehicle and realized she can't charge her car, not even plug it into a 110 outlet because the home is not grounded and it's so old. So the intention of this one, while I'm very happy we're also talking about new construction, this one is intended for existing construction homes that cannot support electric vehicles at, at the time. So providing specific incentives for smaller-scale landlords, like this CPAT member's landlord, who only owns this home and the one that she lives in, to help them.
member's landlord, who only owns this home and the one that she lives in, to help them be able to provide the electrical capacity and wiring to support EV charging in existing rental homes that might be older.
Yeah, and so then going back to kind of that home score that we were talking about, would that be a bonus on the home score, or would that be a negative, because it would be drawing more energy? Would it be seen as a plus, because it would be able, you have that ability, and kind of, in the grand scheme of things, it would be better, or would that count more as a negative, because you'd be using money to charge your car?
So that's a great question. To best of my knowledge, the home energy score model doesn't necessarily take into consideration plug loads, the things that we plugged into outlets, more so like the larger systems of a home and the insulation and the windows and the efficiency. So anyone could use any outlet, either efficiently or inefficiently, but electric vehicles do take quite a bit of electricity. I use a 110 charger at home, it goes underneath my garage door, 30 miles a day, but still adds to my electricity bill. So, great question, it doesn't quite go into the home energy score, but it is something that I would hope that prospective homeowners or home buyers would consider part of it.
Looking at the people who even are reselling homes, you look at a house and you consider, all right, if I make this improvement, how much of it am I going to recoup when I sell a house? Certainly, an EV charger would be something that probably would improve its cost when somebody starts looking to buy out. Periodic, because he's top or something.
Yes.
So, oh, you could actually do this, not just on, on new construction, you could do it on.
We would just need to have some sort of a trigger point of when we would be involved with the existing construction to require such a thing.
Or sort of that incentivize that.
Yes, which is what this one is, it's incentivizing.
Education and specific incentives for small scale.
I'm really glad I got to tell the story of where this action came from, thank you for letting me.
Is there a way that that could be written to make that more clear, the intention?
Probably. I, I know someone on the other side of the table that's really good at rewording things to be very clear.
I already have a, oh.
A reword for clarity.
Checking, checking in over on, online, any comments on CL six?
We shared the screen.
I think I, oh, I thought I was.
No comment.
I agree, that would help.
And I would just kind of add to the comment about recouping some of the things, and it just again keeps going back to me, it's like if the housing market goes that way, I just, I know my experience being a first time homeowner, there were 11 offers on my house, right? There were like three houses available that we could buy, there was no way that we could be picky, or like even get the seller to do any updates in the house at all, right? Because they had 11 offers to choose from, they could just kind of cherry pick and be like, yeah, I'm going to do the one that raised the inspection, and then, you know, all that type of stuff too, and so I think it just, you know, kind of depending upon where the market is, you know, homeowners might be more excited about doing some of this stuff versus not, because if they can actually recoup some of their money back versus, again, people just trying to get into the housing market, you know, which is like just get in so you can buy a house to have some of that equity to then maybe try to be a little bit more picky in like your, the next house that you buy.
It's my understanding that the energy audit doesn't prohibit a sale regardless of what the score is.
Correct, it's a requirement at time of listing, and it's, for lack of a better word, it's red tape at the listing stage to make sure that you're meeting that requirement, not enforcement boots on the ground tickets kind of thing, it's a, you have to input this, and we'll make it as easy as possible. It'll be auto-populated by the system from the national service provider.
More like a transparency thing, versus like someone who has a septic system and has to get it pumped in.
We have gotten specific feedback from especially the Thurston Realtors Association, which Chris is here, to not do a time of transfer, to not make a time of transfer at all, to make a time of listing, that was some very specific, well-heard feedback that we got.
All right, let's move on to CL seven. Same questions apply.
Everything can improve.
On, on this one, I am, I don't know where, I think I wrote another, another note to myself somewhere, but I think it's this one. I like the notion that right up front, under seven point one, the little blue header up there, that we're talking about efficient transportation networks. It seems to me that that's going to be a really, a key, a key part of addressing, among other things, the greenhouse gas emissions. Issue is to have a, this notion of transportation efficient land use patterns, so that you're not having, for lack of something better to call it, excess or unnecessary transport. People have less intensive ways to get around, and also just it takes less of whatever energy form, their own bodily energy or, you know, something external, just, you know, all of that, and, you know, it's also more rational, I guess you could say, you know, easy to get to needed places. You know, if there's this kind of development here, it's kind of auxiliary or ecosystem things are near it, you know, that kind of a, that kind of an approach.
Fifteen minute neighborhood kind of.
I don't know the right language to call that, but, but this notion of having that, that transportation efficient kind of land use pattern, I think is going to be really key, so just want to call that out.
I agree, I'm actually in very much favor of that 15 or 10 minute neighborhood aspect. We were recently looking at potentially moving, and one of the reasons we decided not to is due to where we would move to and lack of access to anything within about 15 minutes, so I just want to call it out that that's a great.
Any, any other remarks on seven?
Given up on the city.
Pardon?
I've given up on the city of trains, I don't, I don't think we have any.
Mr. Robinson, there's a really interesting dashboard about how efficient our transportation networks are, from where we have 15 minute neighborhoods, where we don't. I could send that to you.
Yeah, that'd be great, maybe the whole, the whole group.
Me too.
Oh, you don't, you haven't seen it? There's always a tool that I've never heard of, there's, okay, it's an abundance of tools.
This one just really excites me, because if I never had to drive a car, then I would be so happy. My favorite thing in the world.
Yeah, yeah.
Ready for eight? Okay, just going to eight. Any questions that?
I want to ask a question for Brett. Where, where, where are we on tree management? Where are we on tree management until when?
That was a very timely question, because we discussed that very issue at the council work session at six today. Based on the discussions that the planning commission and the council had at your December 10 meeting, we have proposed that the, all the tree-related amendments would be pushed into 26. Based on the input from members of the commission and the council at that work session, we had a subsequent discussion with the general government. Decision at that time, or the recommendation at that time from the GDC was that we swap out one of the items for the tree protection ordinance, so what was proposed and what we brought forward to the full council this, today, was that the 160 hours that was devoted to the, the multi-family tax exemption program look that we need to do before the program expires at the end of 26 is going to be pushed off until 26, and then we'll bring on the transportation preservation work.
Tree, tree.
Tree. Anyway, the tree preservation ordinance will be taken up likely at, at the end of, towards the end of this year. If you look at your schedule, you'll notice you're pretty packed until about June, and then there's a gap, that gap is all the times that we have to go back to the state with all the materials that we've done, preparing the final ordinance and everything. That gives us a window for us to start work on the transportation preservation. So that work program goes to the council for final approval next week.
Not, yeah, it's still a draft.
Yeah, but as we told the council.
It's in, it's in here.
That's why it's in there.
Good. I'm, I'm wondering, on this one, we say, when, you know, we heard, we heard from the community that there's strong support for preserving the tree canopy, but I want to be, I want to be mindful of kind of two aspects of, of that word preserving. I think we mean preserving healthy cover, but maybe not the exact canopy, not exactly that tree, but, you know, there might be an equivalent tree that grows up and, and replaces it.
I would say that's not the community outreach, the, the community voice that we've heard.
Okay. With more preserve that tree.
Preserve that tree, especially if it's larger than 24 inch diameter, preserve the larger trees that are sequestering and storing more carbon and don't sacrifice them.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I think the, that's good to have that clarification. I want to, I know that, you know, the city is also having to manage some other tree issues where we may not be able to preserve certain older trees. Fair to say? Okay.
The mayor and city council.
So, don't want to get us in a box about.
Will likely have a decision by council and the mayor prior to this being adopted, so I don't think it boxes.
Well, it may be in that particular circumstance, but down the road in the future, you know, is there a way, we should, we should try to find a way to word it so that, yes, we care about our older, larger trees for purposes of sequestration, cultural heritage, whatever have you, you know, on, on and on, it may not always be possible to save every single individual.
Absolutely, and although I haven't done a deep dive into our tree ordinance, other tree ordinances do call out percentages that are.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and it's called the minimum tree density, and I think ours follows a similar approach. So then, there would be that, that minimum tree density assumes that some are being taken, and does call for the, the remainder to have certain criteria, being wind firm, being healthy, being, you know, and hazards, you know, hazard trees, you know.
That's great, I just want to make sure that we are thinking about those things into the future.
That will be something that we balance.
For city liability or what have you. The other side of that is, I think we mean also more, more than just the same size or amount of canopy, but also to increase the canopy.
In certain zones, we have tree canopy goals for different zones, some of them are in large increase, some of them are actually decreased.
Right, right, so it's not just about holding steady of whatever our current thing is right now, you know, call it 100 something or others of our existing, but we want to grow it, literally, grow it. The right tree in the right place.
Right.
Right, exactly, because especially because like when I was reading this, you know, of course, the California fires were going on, right? So that, that's in my mind too, of like, like Commissioner Kretati thought it before, like fire prevention, right? Like we're supposed to, you know, I know, and like when actually and stuff, when I've been there, they have, yeah, all that space and the roofs and everything, and they're really, really thinking about that, and it's like eventually that's what we're going to have to start balancing too, is how, how do we do that? And that might mean relaunchment, yeah, maybe if some of the trees or something are kind of, you know, having to, you know, be preventive and taking down some of the trees that might be more of a fire danger or something at some point in the future, we might have to have some of this stuff.
We definitely get into the wildfire resilience and the resilience sub-element, it's a hazard that we have several actions about, and some that are related to vegetation management.
Right.
And at the same time too, the state projections in our area call for only a, a 1% increase over the next 20 years of, of risk.
Wildfire risk.
So while we are mitigating, a while that is definitely on our minds, and we're, we know that climate and climate change is going to very much impact that, for our region, the impact is significantly less than other regions of the state, and so we hear a lot of the, of the concerns from our neighbor, neighboring jurisdictions that have significantly more risk coming in their direction, up to even 100, 200 fold risk in some parts of eastern Washington, I think, if I was looking at it correctly, but it's quite significant in some areas, I'm sorry, no, I read it wrong, 50% increase, and then we're 1%.
We're fortunate in that regard. I think it's also worth noting that, that there is other vegetation that sequesters carbon than trees, so, you know, of all kinds, grasslands, maybe somewhat smaller, but, you know, they're doing their thing too. Instead of, you know, to, to think that it's just strictly trees, I don't want to, I don't want to give it a, I don't want to narrow our scope too much.
That's why we were very deliberate with this language here in goal C eight, CL eight, natural carbon solutions that are ecosystem appropriate.
Yeah.
Also to recognize that prairies sequester carbon, and all trees also sequester carbon, is not appropriate to afforest prairies.
Right.
And there are, blue carbon, there's lots of different soils, lots of different kinds of vegetation.
Even downwading material.
Yeah, yeah, lots of things that do the job and provide other ecosystems.
Will we get credit for mitigation lands under the HCP?
Might do.
Prairie lands will absorb carbon, and we're, we're going to go out and we're going to buy a whole bunch of land to mitigate our HCP, it would seem like we would be increasing our capability by doing that.
I would certainly co-benefits, absolutely, there are co-benefits, but whether we would, I mean, if, if there are carbon programs in the future, and we can, the trick about carbon programs of what I've learned about them, is that it is so specific, the calculation to, to define a credit on any one parcel, and the system is changing so quickly, is that what you're talking about with credit? Are you talking about, do we get credit for that, or am I?
I, that's part of.
Yeah, so then, that's why we don't have like really micro systems, and like the carbon credit systems are on a very much larger scale right now, at two, you know, at least, at least 100 acres or more is what, yeah, so getting onto that micro scale, it just takes so much more fine tuning of those, those calculations, that it's just not feasible at the moment, but it could be in the future, so it's definitely something that we, we want to maintain those ecosystems for all their benefits, not just because prairie ecosystems have really cool special critters that we want to keep forever, but also because they are unique habitats that do a special job at maintaining the soil and aquifer and all the different things, because they also sequester carbon, because they also, multiplying those, those benefits on, on one space is really, it's valuable for us because space is at a premium, right?
We do have limited staff time to work on different programs, and as Dana was alluding to, it takes a tremendous amount of staff time to manage a carbon market system on any scale, and I personally would prefer to focus my staff time on reducing greenhouse gas emissions than entering. And I personally would prefer to focus my staff time on reducing greenhouse gas emissions than entering a market, which may or may not be even very profitable for work out. There's very few examples, good examples of, of carbon markets that actually do what they say. So I'd like to do, that have been measured to do what they say. So I'd like to spend my staff time doing what I know works.
And Perry, the TRPC staff looked at potential models for prairie sequestration valuing. And as, as we mentioned already, it's really, it's outside of this area. So it really doesn't reflect probably the, the condition of the prairies here and the, and the way of valuing it. So we're still a ways off of trying to assign a value.
But as a jurisdiction in 2026, I believe my department will start some work, very preliminary work, to figuring out a way to measure ecosystem service benefits for the use of city decisions. That work, we got some budget allocated for 2026 to start that work, which would really begin with assessing the quality of ecosystems in our area and looking at different ways of valuing ecosystem service benefits, not for the end product of getting revenue from them, but similar to how Home Energy Score gives you more information to make better decisions. Thinking about the, the value, ecosystem service value to be considered in decision-making for land use or city emissions. So.
Do you think that goes along with the idea that not, not all prairie habitats are scoring five or like that they, they're not all pristine? Not all forests are, have the same values? So that's where the valuation comes in. What is the value of this habitat? Okay, this one's pristine, saving this one. Okay, this one's not pristine, maybe this is okay for a park and some recreation use.
And to get, just, if I may, for one more moment about ecosystem services, my master thesis was about this, I'm very passionate. There's the, the value of its function, there's the value of how our community feels about it. The cultural ecosystem service values that could be for the traditional stewards of the land, but also seeing that forest makes you feel good or seeing the animals in that forest makes you inspire to do art or other things that, that add to our community and our sense of place. So the provisioning of things like water and soil, clean air habitat for gophers, the joy that we get on prairie day where we get to go out on glacial preserve that one day and the flowers and then, so I'll stop geeking out about this, but obviously I like this goal.
Boy.
Thank you.
On 8.1.6, I am, a couple, a couple of things here. One is I know in some areas, businesses, is this mostly about derelict parking lots? Or is this like existing usable ones?
As they're redeveloped or derelict ones, not necessarily requiring anything on existing ones unless there's a change being suggested?
I'm curious about, you know, some, some places might be putting up solar panels and if you have trees shading for solar, it won't maybe work so good. Funny, anything that, so there's, there's that angle of it, just, you know, kind of maybe some latitude there for owners of parking lots to figure out, you know, which they would rather do to get credit. And then the other thing, and maybe this is a whole different other element, but if you're going to grow vegetation in places like that, maybe we have a way to convert impervious to pervious. And so then, I don't know, I didn't really see that in here, but some, some way to do that, you know, there's, maybe not every situation is apt for that because it maybe doesn't have the structural integrity of some impervious surfaces, but maybe there are applications for that.
I love that. I know Tacoma has a good example of a deep pave program for exactly that.
Kind of maybe similar to the roofs or the green living roof, whatever it was. But anyway, you're dealing with, you know, a way to water the tree or whatever other thing.
Something that popped into my mind and that has, there been any research done and do we know the impact of the work from home policies in connection with that? Like have we seen any buildings that were like office buildings or something that got vacated? Have there been any interest in transitioning to this stuff or have we seen that kind of path plan? Or is that what we're hoping to kind of push for or?
We, we're starting to see applicants, applicants come in with potential changes of use. The first project, and this is all public record as part of the development review committee, was to look at the former, well, formerly occupied Department of Health building, that's the farthest one over, I mean, farthest east. There was a proposal put forth eventually to turn all of that into multifamily and to actually convert a portion of the parking lot into multifamily. It ran into a small problem. It sits underneath the airport overlay where you don't want to put residential spaces in that particular area. But I anticipate we'll be seeing more of those kinds of things as not only office buildings, but also larger commercial spaces may no longer be as viable with online and other changes. But yeah, we're starting to see that.
Hey, let me go to folks on, on the Zoom. Commissioner Kotek or Commissioner Staff, do you have any comments on this, this one, CL8? I don't.
Nothing additional that wasn't brought up, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
One more slide and some of the feedback that we got from our, our community climate policy advisory team was that the draft prior to this draft, the timelines were not acceptable, that some items we had pushed out a little further and they reminded us, we, we all are considering the urgency of, of climate crisis, but we have shifted some timelines. So to communicate that to them and the general public, I created this Gantt chart that shows the greenhouse gas sub-elements. These are all by name budgets. And you can see that most of the actions, yellow is an action that has a distinct start and end time and the green are ongoing actions that start at some point and go on forever or until they've outlined their usefulness. But you can see that most of the actions are occurring, or at least beginning by 2030, which is our first greenhouse gas emission reduction goal. So we've shifted the timelines to be more in line with the urgency of the crisis and not necessarily only responsive to the speed of government and the speed of trust for those actions. Just to visualize, a lot of work to do in the greenhouse gas sub-element for the first six years. And next time when I show you the resilience sub-element Gantt chart, you won't even be able to see the numbers because there's so many actions. But that's my presentation for tonight.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And I thank you for your wonderful feedback. I wrote down all of it. There's a lot of changes we can immediately make and thank you for pointing out things that, with me reading this document so many times, that some things got overlooked and I appreciate the, the multiple eyes to make the work better. So thank you. Catching things.
Um, let's see. Looks like our next meeting will be February 11th. And any, anybody have anything else to contribute for tonight or?
We know an address for this.
Mr. Kurt?
All we have is an email address.
Fad lives in Olympia. Fad lives in Olympia.
Olympia, okay. So he's not a resident of Tumul.
But is interested to stay colder.
Yeah. Great. Thanks for asking that question. Anything else tonight? Any motions?
I move that we adjourn.
Great, thank you. That was a second from Commissioner. Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn tonight. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Did somebody really say nay? All right, we adjourn. Thanks everybody, including our guest tonight. Bye-bye.